I'm sorry? No, I haven't heard Boob, but his uh, he didn't, he didn't, he didn't ask for a packet or anything, so I just assumed he'd be here.
I hear you said many years ago.
You're right here, you're one 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 five, right?
There's no way like.
He has like one.
You can't do that.
Can't cross the border.
You say you're this way.
This way, just this way. There was nothing between me and the border.
What you can still.
We are here.
You can't even go to find your lights or anything.
David, can you hear us? Can any, can anybody in the board that zoomed in hear us?
Yeah, you're loud and clear.
So I can hear you.
Okay.
So Steve, when I do it, did you just show, does it just show the background or what does it show, does it just show the camera off or a black screen when I switch apps?
It just, yeah, it takes you out of the picture altogether, just says, uh, Joe Nimmick is on audio, is all it says.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad I said nest cameras, Linda's upstairs with her quilt meeting tonight, so I just was turning off some of the nest cameras to cut down on the, yeah. Cut down on the bandwidth, yeah.
It's two minutes fast.
Three minutes.
Okay. I can't remember last time we had this many people in this room.
Uh, March seventeenth.
Okay, there you go.
Two thousand twenty. We had our last meeting in.
Good evening, Chief.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening.
Hey, Chief.
Hey, Chief.
Hello, hello.
Hey, Chief, thank you so much for your Facebook updates, I was, had a couple of comments from residents talking about that our faith police, Sleepy Hollow Police Facebook pages never look better and they appreciate the good information, so thank you.
Excellent, that's an easy way to get the word out to everyone, and we now have one certified spotter, so.
Oh, we do.
We do.
Great.
Sir Diori.
Oh, tell, tell him thank you very much, did he enjoy it?
I saw this in my mailbox, I was like, oh wow, that's awesome.
That's great.
Yeah.
So he'll be out on top of the barn with the binoculars looking for the twister to come around.
There we go. So did he enjoy the seminar?
He said he liked it, he thought it was very good, a lot of good information, a lot he didn't know.
Yes.
Useful to have when you're out there.
Oh, it is, that's.
I have, I have seven twenty. It closes all on its own, John. Okay, it is seven thirty, and according to the governor's executive order, the Open Meetings Act has been amended to allow for remote attendance at these meetings. This evening, we have two trustees attending remotely, trustee Stephen DeHattley and trustee Joe Nimmick, also attending remotely is Zentrum Chief of Police, Chris Kapaka. In the boardroom itself, we have three of the trustees, trustee Merkel, trustee Harning, trustee Perino, along with Clark Mills and myself. Therefore, we have conformed with the orders of the governor, and those attending remotely can hear and we can hear them. So let's call this meeting to order, and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and justice.
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. DeHattley.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Nimmick.
Here.
Mr. Zimba. Mr. Merkel.
Here.
Mr. Harni.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. We have a quorum, we have a meeting, okay, first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of April fifth, two thousand twenty-one. I have a motion to so approve.
I make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of four, five, twenty-one.
Second. Moved by Mr. DeHarni and seconded by Mr. Perino to approve the minutes of April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, roll call, please. Mr. DeHattley.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
I'm saying.
Mr. Harni.
Aye.
Four eyes, one extension, the minutes are so approved. Okay, before we continue with the agenda this evening, if you all noticed, we do have an eight o'clock presentation by A.J. Hendrickson on the one thousand and one West Main proposal. I would like to have the agenda amended this evening as all the representatives for the presentation are here at the moment. Our next item on the agenda is the budget, I don't think they want to sit here as we go line by line by line. Since they are prepared, I would like to amend the agenda to have that presentation moved up to the current time slot.
I make a motion that we move the presentation that's set for eight o'clock by A.J. Hendrickson to present time immediately.
Second. Moved by Mr. Merkel, seconded by Mr. Perino to move the eight o'clock presentation up to the current time slot. Any comments, questions, or discussions? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Harni.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. DeHattley.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, I give the floor to the Hendricksons for their presentation.
I'll start out first, sorry, Hendrickson, just briefly, and I'll turn it over to A.J. We end up with this project, it's always nice to know who your neighbors are or where they're from. We're Engineered Components, we're eleven hundred Davis, we've been there for several years. Further with this down the road, I do invite anybody into our place to take a look at us, take a look at our company. I can tell you to call Elgin and you talk to the building department. Many people there says we have the nicest appearing and best maintained building in the city of Elgin. We also work with Michael Rivas, police chief here, and Jim, the police chief in Elgin. Example, when the defunding for police thing started back then, we bought pizza for every police officer in both these towns. And we're about to do it again and again next week, because I think we have some more negativity coming up with the police officers, so we support the police departments and the fire department. So that's just kind of a, kind of an overview of who we are again, if you want to proceed with this, and you'd like to see what are, how we maintain the building and what we do. I'll turn it over to A.J.
A.J. Hendrickson, ECC Motorsports, an engine components company. Enginered Components has been in business for quite some years, nineteen eighty-three, I think soon you started the company. The motorsports thing happened a little bit later, you've been involved in motorsports your whole life. Getting started in the sixties, but starting your own team in the eighties, I basically took it over when we were in Mooresville, North Carolina. We moved back here, about ten years, Mooresville, North Carolina, for ten years, which is basically NASCAR city, like they call it Race City, USA. We had a successful race team there for many years. So now we're back in this building. The company could use some more room, and this building here that we recently found, it really fits in how we want to grow, as far as we think we can, we can do a little bit of retail and grow, as far as we have many customers that we, that we can go forward with. With a, with a location as, you know, as this, as this building that we're looking into buying versus our current location. The, the current classic, not classic, we have classic cars too, NASCAR type, and then race car collection would also be more appropriate, we feel, in a building like we're trying to purchase versus where we're at in an industrial park. It seems like it would just be, it would be a lot more visible to the public. We could do, we've always kind of wanted to do car shows and stuff like that. Wherever at, you really, really can't do that, we have, we have quite a bit of parking spaces, but nothing like what this building at one thousand and one has, where it has plenty, I think there's three hundred parking spaces overall, to where we could really do a proper gathering seasonally, whenever it was, you know, whenever a good time seems to be, that sound is correct, but. We, we're, we're trying to grow, is what is one reason for this, we have potential to get an electric manufacturer, manufacture backings with an electric motorsports program, to where the, we're trying to be all electric by twenty thirty-five, all the manufacturers are claiming they'll be electric by twenty thirty-five. Currently, there is hardly or no money being put into the current combustion engine, honestly, it's all either hybrid or electric. So that could be a possibility in our future, not saying that it would or could happen, but it's, it's a very, there's been talk of that, and that's just an example of one thing, you know, one example of being in a premier building and location like that would really help us move forward in a positive direction as a race team versus our current location. That's the main thing, I've been a proud resident, and happily, for six years now, so it's kind of like a dream location, honestly, where it's like my house is right there, and our, the business is right there across the highway in Elgin, and then this, this race shop slash, I'm not sure if we want to, if we want to consider it a museum, or if it's not really, that's, that's more down the road, whether we would charge all the money, which would mostly be donated, or possibly, we talked about even all of it, because we were really looking to make money and people looking at the cars, they were just more there for, to draw attention to the business and, and some of our future customers, and to go forward with some current customers, basically. Yeah, I think, for me, I think I'll turn it over to Adam, he can say.
He goes in a little bit as far as what is this electrical project that some of the people wants to do, which is a testing, testing electric.
Which has, which has been only mentioned to us at this point, but the, the future and the possibility is so powerful that this would help us take advantage of, of going with ideas that we're going to have.
Adam might throw this out, we actually just gave a proposal, a five-year proposal to Chrysler on doing their testing, racing, racing these electric cars. Of course, you look back in the day, that's, that's how a lot of testing was done. Let's see what kind of a beating, so if we're looking for something, what kind of a beating can these batteries take, and what kind of a beating can you have the engines take. Adam, you might want to.
Yeah, for sure, thank you, thank you guys, my name's Adam Andretti, I'm actually not, I'm a resident of Brownsburg, Indiana, so I, I am, I'm invading on your property here, but I have been a loyal driver to ECC Motorsports for over the past ten years. And first and foremost, I was born into the racing Andretti family, my father's Aldo, which is Mario's identical twin brother, I was his last mistake, so that makes me Mario's nephew, Michael's cousin, John's little brother, Marco's second cousin, there's a lot of us that do this, but, but anyway, one of the things that we've always been so proud of in our family is, is the great brand that was built on, on the backs of my father Aldo and my uncle Mario. And we've always taken that very seriously in, in our own careers, and that's why I hooked up with ECC Motorsports in the first place, because they take their reputation very seriously on top of my own, and, and, and that's, that's a big part of this whole thing too as well. The other thing is, you know, our family, we're big on family and community, and with the Hendricksons and what they do, and how they run their, and operate their businesses, I think you would see that that would reflect exactly just that. Not only are their employees considered really family members to them, and Harni, you can watch them walk through that building and the amount of respect that he gives for every individual that works in that building is pretty incredible to see. But even on top of that, what they do, as Ronnie just touched on, those are just small examples of what they've done for the community. He's a very humble man, so I don't think he's going to sit up here and kind of dress like the gorilla, but he is certainly, I, I am the person that can stand here and do that for them. I've, I've witnessed it, and I've been proud to be a part of it, and I think honestly would be a great addition to the community in the village of Sleepy Hollow. I've seen wonderful things that race teams bring to the community, the town that I live in, Brownsburg, if you were to look it up, that town is known to be the place where race teams house themselves for the most part in Indiana. The reason being is Brownsburg saw the advantage to motorsports, that it brings in great community values, wonderful individuals come to work for race teams, and so they actually put up a lot of tax breaks to bring in the race teams, and it's amazing what it's done for our town of Brownsburg, the wonderful restaurants, the wonderful places that is built up around there. And I'm not saying that that's what ECC Motorsports bring, I'm saying that that's what the town of Brownsburg experienced, and I know that, like, there has been, like, Newman Haas Racing, a team that my, the IndyCar team that my uncle Mario finished his career with in IndyCar, and built up through the eighties and the early nineties, they were located in also a small little town, I'm sorry, I don't remember what town it was, but it was a suburb. Libertyville. Libertyville, Libertyville, Illinois, so this is another, again, suburb here, so, and I know that little town, always, we're so proud and love to have that race team here, so thank you again for your time, we certainly appreciate you all giving us this time to speak to you all on this behalf, because it is obviously something we're excited about, that, that building over there on one thousand and one listening, so thank you again.
The only thing I want to add, which Adam brought up, is the car collection. The car collection that we have is about twenty-five cars, a nineteen sixty-seven car that was built around the Daytona five hundred, all the way up until a couple of recent, within a few years old, cars. We've, we've gone to the extreme, because there would be no sense in us talking about that building if the second floor wouldn't support it. So we had a structural engineer go through that building, actually, they're doing a report on that building, and the floor is, is built to handle that, it was, I guess, a lot of furniture up there. It'll take, you can take fifty cars up there.
It'll take twice, he said.
It'll take twice, Adam, but we're only talking about about twenty-five up there. And those would be on display, we haven't decided whether we're going to charge for it, or we're going to have it free to the public, because we're not that far along, we do have all the cars, and it's, it's ready to go there, or it's ready to go somewhere, but we could also possibly talk about that in the future, and maybe generate some revenue with that and charge a, you know, minimal fee for people who come through there and take a look at it, which might, you know, add a little bit of tax money to the.
Well, and help promote the other businesses also within the area, that's the big thing, you know, it's something like that, people that are going to come and, and take a look at a collection like that, they're certainly going to want to maybe find somewhere to eat, fill up their gas tank, things, things of that sort, and they're going to be right there in town, so there are definitely, I think, other businesses that would benefit for something along those lines as well, definitely, we would see that. And I also forgot to mention, on the electric car side that, that Ronnie was mentioning, is, you know, we compete in the Trans Am series, which, that's America's oldest road racing series, it was founded in nineteen sixty-six, the muscle car wars back in the sixties, they had two areas for it, the drag strip and Trans Am was the other area for the proving grounds of that, and it's still going strong now, but the owner of Trans Am is, is a bit of a visionary as well, and he's seeing where the future is headed, so he wants to come up with a class of racing that is all electric. Given the fact that these manufacturers, as A.J. hit on, their zero money is going into the internal combustion engine, it is all into electrification, and that is, they're all saying, by twenty thirty-five is the latest one, there's some manufacturers saying by twenty twenty-five, like Jaguar, for example, will be completely abandoned of the internal combustion engine, so they're simply seeing this as a, as a potential in Trans Am, and, and we have the support of the owner of Trans Am, Tony Porella, that is certainly pushing manufacturers towards us to get involved with us and our team, so we do have that working on. As A.J. said, there's no guarantees, as you all know, there's no guarantees in life at all, but it is something that we're definitely working on, it would bring some prestige as well, I think it'd be pretty, pretty neat to know that you're on the cutting edge of the research and development for what the future is going to hold for, I mean, lifetimes to come with our transportation.
What's your time for, hopefully, realistically?
That, that's in, Ronnie?
Well, the time, the timeframe could be whether, number one, whether we can purchase the building.
Yeah, right now, we're in between, or in between offers, there are going to be down and back and forth.
Yeah, it's, okay, and it has nothing to do with the money, we've already, already discussed, you know, made an offer on the building, it's just a matter of whether it's going to be cold, and again, we like to lay everything out on the table, so there will be no painting in that building, there will be no, none of that type of thing, but there is going to be some, possibly some welding, slight welding, and there is going to be a little bit of bodywork, but most of that is because we have a complete paint booth right over here in Elgin, those cars would all be completed, done, put together, and sent over there for, for the, for most of, most of the bodywork they paint, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Adam.
No, no, AJ, you, you had said, I think, you're trying to purchase, you know, we had a, another business come in here that we went quite a distance with them, they were going to open up a pet place, or, and then it turns out they didn't, they have a lease, and they weren't sure if they were buying or whatever, so you're, you'll be able to purchase it if you kind of get the okay from the board? Right, yeah, if the, if the board okay's it, then we can go back and, and have some serious discussions with them, but we've looked the building over, and we're very interested in it, it fits for what, it fits for what we want to do.
And then I think, AJ, you mentioned something, is this just going to be race cars, or is it going to, you have your objectives here, and it sounds like you want to have car shows and things like that, but it's going, I, I'm wondering what's going to be done mechanically, or.
It would be a combination also. There is one smaller section of the building that would be for classic cars, where classic cars are purchased, displayed, and resold, that's what my older son would do, so it's a combination of buying and reselling classic cars on one end of the building, and of course, then, the race team on the other end of the building, and again, what we're doing is, they're having to go on and purchase all brand new cars, to bring in chassis and everything else, and then, of course, they'll supply us the electric, the engine, the electric engine, and they'll be supplying the batteries from the factory.
I guess what I was asking is.
As far as what kind of work, extent of work will be done in the building?
Right, how much would be mechanical, body shop, that kind of thing?
Like, he was saying that we wouldn't do any bodywork, because basically there would be no extremely dirty work, the bodywork, you know, as far as bond over, painting would be done, and we have a paint booth at our current location, which we would be keeping that, so there wouldn't be anything like, I think that's a whole nother, a whole nother problem, really, so we just, we're going to leave that in place, and by the way, we would be taking, even though we, you know, the shortest way from that building is from, is through the neighborhood, just to clear it up, we wouldn't be going back and forth through here with, like, you know, race car trailers and stuff like that, it would, it would definitely be going down main, across thirty-one, and then back up, we wouldn't be dare go through here daily, or even weekly, or even monthly to do that, that's one thing that we would definitely never do, it would only be personal vehicles only, so just to clear that up, you wouldn't see race car trailers in the neighborhood at all, so that, that's, that would be just annoying.
And any concerns with contaminants too, as far as like changing fluids and things, race teams for decades now are very, very strict with how we control those fluids, a company out there called Safety Clean. And we, we use them as far as all the, as far as those fluids, it's something that, at race tracks, in our shop, we, we hold to the very highest standards on all those things.
So we, yeah, we dispose of, we have one oil container, and then, you know, we don't even use antifreeze, but if we ever were to, we would put antifreeze in dirty water and stuff like that, and then they basically come in, and they'll come in one, we, we do it once a month right now, it works for us, they come in once a month and take the full containers and drop off empty ones for us, and they just, that's for, that's for them to, to figure out where to dispose of, but they, they basically recycle the oil. Yeah.
And to back it up real quick, we want, we're not going to be doing any dirty in there, because I'm going to have twenty-five cars on the second floor, and we don't want to go around wiping the dust off of them.
Yeah, it would be a lot much cleaner environment, isn't it?
So it's mainly a clean environment type thing.
There's a one question, how do you get the twenty-five cars up to the second floor?
We raise them up with a, with a special built piece of equipment.
Okay, so you're not putting a ramp in or something?
Oh, no.
No ramp. We would be, we would need to be taking out a few pieces of the glass, with the glass floor.
Piece of the glass.
Take out two sections of glass and use a, there's a forklift that, I think one of our forklifts either, or we would use one that would raise it really high, we would basically have to build something that, like an ivy, which we have, we actually have quite a bit of material to make something to where it would be safe for a forklift to, to raise it up there.
And once they're up there, any outside storage, is there any?
I would like to keep it as clean as, and maybe even cleaner than it already is, because right now, I've noticed that there's like a, I think the dumpster could be fenced in a little better, they just have a big dumpster in the back, and maybe a, a half a wall or something would be nicer, so honestly, there would be less outside than there, than there currently is.
Go over by our building.
It wouldn't be having a trailer outside.
I don't want anything on the outside, no garbage, no boxes, none of that stuff, it's, it's pretty all the time, and if it is, I drive up there in the morning, I go, we got a little stump of lane in the park, and I clean it up, frequently comes a cleanliness and, you know, looking good.
So I got a couple of questions, they're not in any particular order, I know that one of the attachments in your packet shows a picture of a lot of cars in a, in a building, is this what's currently at your facility in Elgin?
Yes.
Okay, so what I understand you guys to say is that, and I, unfortunately, have never been in that building, what you're saying is these, these twenty-five cars or so would actually be on the entire second floor of the building, okay, and people would go up there, they could view them, see them, there's signs on them that tells you what cars they are, and so forth.
History.
So what goes downstairs? What's the downstairs?
The cars, the race, the race cars.
The downstairs.
Aren't these race cars that are on?
Those are all old.
Those are all the.
The vintage cars. So when you say race cars downstairs, are they also just going to be visible, or you're working on some of that, you're building that?
Yeah, but there would be, like, the ones that are, like, finished and. Yeah, but there would be, like, the ones that are like finished and complete would be, or we have some that are actually show cars that are also there. So they would be in the front, where you can see it like from the road where it's the glass, and right now, it's wide open, okay? There's a section where it's blocked off to the one side of the building, where it's like a more of a, where like a storage or a warehouse that's unfinished. And that's where the classic car area would be, where my brother and his elder son would be, would be having this classic car area.
Now, you mentioned with that, that you're also going to be selling, selling, I could come in and buy one of the classic cars? Does that mean by selling them?
Yes, yes.
So there's, you know, you have a license to, you have car dealership, you have sales tax?
He's going to, he's kind of, he's just started in, getting what he needs to do.
Answered, yes, 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 because we.
And have you done that currently anywhere?
No.
Okay.
Not, not, not for resale. I'm just encouraging you to do that, this building fits perfect for that, he's always wanted to do it.
And then, so in the main area, which, like right now, for example, if you walk in the front door, you have a nice area, and you would have, that's where it all would stay nice. And then there'd be areas behind that that's also open, but we want to have like, where you would like do fabrication work or whatever, that would be in an area that we would put up most likely at least a half of a wall or something to block off, and maybe with some viewing windows, if someone, if someone was there to purchase parts or whatever miscellaneous, they could maybe walk up to a viewing window and see stuff happening that's actually like live work in a race shop, which I think a lot of, most of the people in the NASCAR world have actually done that to where they made a small viewing area to where they don't want people running around in their race shop, but they like to maybe see what they're doing, so.
You mentioned some simulator, you have four simulator machines or devices? Would those be set up also where, you know, myself or residents could come in and try those?
That, yeah, that was something that I thought of because.
I'm sorry? You, you?
Those will be in, there's several offices there, they've overdone that place with offices, plenty of them in there.
What about noise, you know?
For the simulator.
It would be in there, yeah, something that I would be known to do to where it's, there's a lot of interest in that lately, I've noticed. Not just, not just like racing, but, you know, performance, tries to have fun, a lot of people are doing it.
How many people in the Sleepy Hollow, West Dundee, Elgin, Carpentersville, Algonquin area are real NASCAR fans that you're going to attract to this location? Have you done any thought or studies on that?
I mean, I've done a little bit of research, and it's a little more spread out than that. They're, they're in the, I would say more like, I would say more like Chicago land, I will call, maybe not the immediate area like you said, but I can tell you that in Chicago land, I can't say much for the new generation because I just don't really know about that, but I know that they are interested in the electric thing, and whatever's new, whatever's new. But I know for a fact there's a lot of the, my generation and my father's generation, and somewhere in between's generation, that there is quite a bit of motorsports. And also, you know, classic car enthusiasts. And maybe not just motorsports, but also there is, I believe, still a strong NASCAR, even though, even though they don't race here, right, currently, you know, they used to race once a year in Chicago land. When they did, they did pretty well, it's just that it's a matter of, I'm not sure why exactly what happened there, but I think, I think the COVID thing helped and that, but.
You also mentioned, you're going to be, on your thing here, you're going to be selling clothing, pins, things of that nature, a little retail space?
Yeah, we would try to do some sort of, yes, exactly that, and and that would be fairly small, to be honest with you, I mean, you know, retail, there's not many things that are actually surviving, honestly.
Right, but if somebody comes in, you know.
But we would have stuff like that, yes.
You know, you think about attracting people to come in, what, what, what would your hours be?
They would, they would probably, they would be mainly standard hour, I mean, something like eight to six.
And on Sundays, you can't sell cars in the state of Illinois? So would you, you may be open on Sunday?
Yeah, we would, we would be closed on Sunday, for sure.
And what?
I mean, unless we do a car show or something, yeah, unless there was something special happening, it would be closed.
Parking lot basically be empty unless you were having a car show?
Right.
That's kind of.
Unless we're working, yes, right.
I know, Mr. Adrian, you probably don't know the area that well, but Sleepy Hollow, everything on the other side of Route seventy-two across from this building is not Sleepy Hollow. So we're bringing all these folks in, and they're all buying lunch and dinner, and they're in the outside of our village.
Understood.
And that's one of the unfortunate parts about it. I mean, my concern is you're bringing all these other folks in from Chicagoland. You know, we have increased traffic, we have increased roads, they're obviously going to be driving through Sleepy Hollow because they want to see the village, so, you know, I don't know, as, as things progress, you know, I would certainly like the chief to get involved in determining, you know, what is that element, what is that factor of number of vehicles going through the village? You know, we also don't have gas stations in Sleepy Hollow, unfortunately. We would like, we would like an Adretti Whiter, you know, put one in right over here.
Love to bring that here.
That'd be awesome.
And you want to also, I think it brings up a great point, how can we, having, with whatever traffic comes through, how can we promote the village, you know? In this day and age of technology, we could have QR codes around, and that could be, that could spawn more village businesses rather than them going across the street.
You see, our strip center is all we have.
That's all you have.
That's all we've got.
Well, that's what we want.
One thousand one is the anchor of our retail establishment. That's what we're concerned about, sales tax.
Understood, understood.
And a lot of Dunkin' Donuts, that'd be awesome.
Right.
But I think that in general, you know, you're looking at, certainly occupying a building makes sense because it's not an empty structure. It's then during the course of a week, or month, or six months, what impact does it have on the village of Sleepy Hollow where we have this building full of these type of vehicles on a daily basis? That's the unknown. Obviously, there's planning and zoning requirements and building requirements, and I'm kind of surprised that I'm hearing Mr. Henderson say you guys are that far, that you're pretty far along in negotiating with the current owner of the building, because that's been one of the things that's been the big, big unknown factor.
Well, put it this way, we, they threw a figure at us and we threw one back.
Well, the fact that you even know who they are is kind of nice to hear. So, you know, obviously, as, as this all begins to progress, I was actually on the planning and zoning board when we approved Maxway Motors way back when. You know, and that fell apart, so, you know, there'll be a lot of requirements you guys will start to go through, the board is the final, you know, once it all gets through and passed and decided, public hearings and all of that stuff. You know, that, that would be then, you know.
Were they a good tenant? I mean, did they do something wrong there, or?
Well, I'm not going to comment specifically on it, but the fact that they were only there less than a year may answer your question. So it's a visible corner, you know, because there is a lot of traffic. You know, you may want to do your own traffic studies, see how many vehicles actually pass by there. What about outdoor sign? What are you thinking? Because we don't allow any lit, lit or motion signs or?
The only thing we have is whatever's allowed on the front building.
And if you see what's on the front building now, I'd be curious to see what your thoughts are, where it says Maxway Motors, it's difficult to even see it, the letter. So, you know, later on, things, you know, as time goes on, you know, with our building department and and all those things, you know, it'll be, it'll be a challenging road, I'm not going to deny that, but you know, obviously, commitment, local residents, you know, name recognition. You know, you guys have a passion for this stuff, you know, we're interested to see how it plays out. But they were, they were kind of all my questions. What about, do you guys serve any coffee or have a latte bar or anything like that for people walking around?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Things when the family comes in?
You know, we have a couple places.
Okay, I'm good. You want to bring the watch, the clock tower over?
Thank you. Now. That's all real, right away. I wanted to build that higher than that, but I wasn't allowed to build it any higher than that is. About another fifty feet.
Oh.
And you can look at their building, and you can see that the building that are now is not a lot of flash. You know, there's no flash there, it's all business, and so that's not their style anyway, to want any of that neon spinning or anything along those lines. It was like that, that humility, that's that, that nice subtleness, but it also is, it does everyone proud.
You know, my comment is, is if you're going to buy this property and put a money into it, I, I kind of believe that if you can get through, jump through the hoops that you need to do with the zoning, following our zoning laws, that it's your decision what to do with the property as long as it fits with our zoning. I've got ten days left on the board, and I'm glad I still have this, but I don't think we can tell you we don't like the idea if it fits with the zoning sort of. I think you need to do that, and I think we have some policy, we have to give it deposit, I don't know, talking to you about that. At this other project, we put a lot of work in and expenses into it, and it just fell apart.
We're mainly kind of looking to see if there's any big objection. I mean, if the board got together and said, you know, I don't think we, I don't think we want this, then I don't want, we don't want to come in here and fight with the board. I mean, I'm on a board now, and I know how all of that goes.
So, yeah, we had this conversation about it last meeting. The question, there was questions, and I invited them here this evening to answer those questions and give a presentation. Ask around. You want to just kind of ask the board if they have?
I wanted the board to hear and see.
So we'd like to hear back from you if we should.
We've heard from. Mr. Diatley, Mr. Nimmick, any comments or questions? You guys have been.
Yes, at least you go first. Couple of things, I've been listening intently, and I am a classic car guy, so I do enjoy cars. I have done a little bit of research just for everyone involved. ECC Motorsports, they are who they say they are, they have a very good reputation. Of people I've talked with about them and just, they do what they say they're going to do, is the word on the street on them, so so that's a very good thing. I think it's just going through the process, learning more, and, you know, seeing where we can go with this, but I think, I think there's some very good possibilities here. Joe?
Yeah, thank you. Let me just say, full disclosure first, I'm more of a Formula One person than a NASCAR person, but I support all motorsports, so. I have no issues with it, I think, as long as somebody wants to go in that building, I think there's a greater likelihood that it'll sit empty for a long time in this current climate, so I'm all for anybody moving in. It sounds like you have the noise and other issues all thought out, so I don't have any problem with that. I would like to see, I know there's some issues with, because of the age of the parking lot, with some of the stormwater runoff, so it'd be nice if that got corrected as part of this new project, but I, I think it's great, and I want to do what I can to support you guys and make it as easy and bring you into the village.
Okay, everybody else have any more questions? Gentlemen, I appreciate your time. From what I gather from my board, I will be in touch with you, and maybe you and I and the debtors from ICCI and the village attorney will get together and go down and see what all the requirements are that you would need to do in case we need to, you know, make a change to our zoning to allow these type of use. I appreciate your time, everyone.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Well, we will. Check with us about midnight.
All right. I'll still be driving home, so.
Brownsburg?
All the way to Brownsburg.
I sixty-five?
Yeah, it's good times.
Don't try and ask.
Oh, what? I didn't hear that. Officer, I know what to do in Sleepy Hollow, I'm smart. I know, I know what I'm doing.
Give you a pass.
Yeah. Hey, chief, that's why we got that new speed sign up, right?
Waiting for the post.
It's up, it's up.
Officer Stig, he did the webinar and everything, so he's good to go.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's up, it's good.
Looks good, I want, I got, we should probably thank Mona Hour for donating that sign because it is, it really stands out in that corner there, so it was very nice of her.
Well, I will tell you, at noon, you cannot see the sign. When the sun's bright. Yep, you cannot see the sign.
Really?
It does not show.
Interesting.
Sorry, but I just thought I'd let you know. Okay, let's continue with the regular agenda. The president's report, I've got the agenda here, I've also got it under, well, we did have it under old business.
It is.
And I've got the wrong agenda in front of me, I don't see it under old business, there you go. Get rid of that one. Oh, let's just hold that off till old business, and we'll just go on through the rest of the report in the meeting here. Let's see, what was, I guess I've got nothing at the moment. Court's report.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, planning and zoning commission, we have no report this evening. Attorney's report, there's no attorney's report this evening. The engineer's report is in the packet, he has nothing new to report. That brings us to the warrants for April nineteenth, we have a motion to approve the warrants.
I made the motion, we approve the warrants of April nineteen, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of a minute. Further down, I thought. Somebody have a figure?
One hundred and three thousand, four hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents.
One hundred and four thousand?
One hundred and three thousand.
One hundred and three thousand?
Four hundred and three dollars.
Four hundred and three dollars?
And twenty-three cents.
Twenty-three cents.
Okay, moved by Mr. Perano, seconded by Mr. Merkel to approve the warrants of April nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents. Any comments, questions, additions or deletions? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Diatley?
Aye.
Mr. Perano?
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick?
Aye.
Mr. Harney?
Aye.
Mr. Merkel? Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, any comments from the public? I don't have any, none will receive before this evening's cutoff at five-thirty. We've had our eight o'clock presentation. Trustees report, roads and parks, Mr. Harney?
Two quick items. According to Kyle, only one of our three part-time employees, and these are employees I'm talking about that cut the grass, basically, only one has returned, so he's looking, as long as the budget is there to pay him. Two more part-time employees, so if anybody knows, anybody, Kyle would be the guy to see and talk to him. The other item, I'm sure everybody's noticed, we do have the electronic speed monitoring signed up and operating. I did notice it was having trouble today, it seems like the numerals are backwards, because when I went by it, it said fifty-two on it. Higher than you were speaking.
How fast were you going, Ed?
Fifty-eight.
Chief, that's in jest, chief. So, that's all I have.
I just made a comment on that monitor, I mean, the speed. I understand there's different things, actions on there, or functions that it can do, it can give us a count how many people are over, and it also can, it's not a strobe, but a little light lights up if you're over. So, I don't know, who controls on that, Kyle's control on that, but maybe if you're coming through, and you're more than twenty-five, I think it's a little red light, lights up, just doesn't shoot in your eyes or anything.
Oh, okay.
There's just.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't, sometimes it flashes, this one has a.
That's, that's, you know, that's a good question, we should probably solve now, is the, now that the village is taking control of it, is the responsibility of public works, or is it the police department to adjust and maintain those things and ask for public works for any maintenance, and it seems like would be more appropriate?
Well, chief had, the chief had appointed one of his officers to kind of do the class on it and learn kind of how to run it. So I would probably defer to chief and see what his thoughts are there.
He can, yeah, our officer, he will be able to generate reports, and we just kind of just include that on a monthly basis to you guys, just to give you an idea of what. He can, yeah, our officer, he will be able to generate reports and we was kinda just include that on a monthly basis to you guys, just to give you an idea of what's going on and um how many people are over and we can set it to capture, kinda like the city of Chicago does, five over, it starts issuing tickets, we can do five, ten over. Um, when we still wanna start putting those numbers in and we can present that in a report. And anything else parameter-wise, we can look at it from an internal part, um, where Officer Stegman will know how to adjust that. I think anything physically, like if the pole needed to be moved or the sign maybe needed to be adjusted, I know the mayor had said that at high noon, you really can't see it that well. Maybe we could have public works if they could help us out with that, um, excuse me, make a ju, a physical adjustment to it, but I think anything internal or mechanical, like interior, like we can generate reports or adjust the settings, we we can do that.
I have a question, chief, does the sign take a pic you mentioned?
Doesn't take picture.
Over five.
Photos, there's no camera inside there, just uh, it'll collect, like like a counter, it'll give a report of how many, whatever time period we're looking for, how many people were over, whatever we set it, so let's say thirty miles an hour, and it'll give us a report of how many people were over thirty miles an hour and whatever time period we're looking for.
Okay, just as a, as a report, okay, thank you.
Well, it gives traffic counts also, then?
I believe, I believe it can, like how many.
Wow.
There's a bit, how many cars are going back and forth on the, on the street, yes. Help you with road, planning for road resurfacing and things like that.
Thank you, thanks for your hard work on this, I appreciate it, jump in on that.
Officer Stegman did all the hard work.
Well, tell him thank you too.
Kyle put it up, so.
They were putting in the new telephone poles on Sleepy Hollow Road today, yes, they had it blocked up, I don't know if they, what we're putting in two, is that what I remember?
Uh, whatever, it was, there was it. Oh, five to it. But now, see, that, God has been going crazy in the neighborhood, they've been working Locust and they've been working Sleepy Hollow Road and they've been working Bonkowski, they've been replacing. So I'm not sure, you know, exactly how many, but I I knew there was two or three on Sleepy Hollow Road, a couple on uh Locust and a couple on uh Bonkowski. The one interesting thing is uh, the poles are no longer forty feet high, they're forty-five feet high.
I thought they looked higher.
So, that also kinda raises the question of the small cell towers. You recall that conversation, small cell?
Put them on poles, yeah.
Putting them on telephone poles.
Yeah, that's an option with these taller poles.
That's the option on the taller poles. We haven't heard of any coming to the neighborhood, but we just noticed, you know, they're replacing the poles, they're not putting forty for forties, they're putting forty-fives for forties. They're sneaking them up a little bit higher.
That'd be better than a hundred twenty-five.
What's that?
It'd be better than a hundred twenty-five feet.
Well, depends on how many of them we end up with in town.
Yeah.
I mean, at one point, they said we could have thirty-five or forty of them. We'll see, it's all, you know, down the road, anyway, any, I think also roads and parks, thank you, Mr. Harney. Uh, finance, Mr. Zambis now with us, water and sewer, Mr. Nimmick.
Well, just to tack onto that, comment did hit the water main when they're doing the one on Locust, but apparently our, the Julie markings were off by a foot, so they clipped it, so there was a repair on that the other day. Jeff Steele and Brian are working together with Kyle's comments. Jeff prepared a list of the urgent water main replacements that need to be done as soon as possible, Brian's working together, put some numbers and along with Kyle and figuring out what savings there would be and what the cost would be for loans and how long we wanna finance and borrow from banks, so hopefully at one of the meetings in May, we should have some more numbers on that, we're probably, at the speed we're going, at least a year to two years before we'd be able to initiate that project. So, so I have others' questions?
Questions for Mr. Nimmick? There being none, thank you, Mr. Nimmick. Enjoy your evening on the porch.
Yes, like.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna go to Mars, but I just like, I like this background better.
Yeah, you gotta wait till the helicopter flies.
It did, do you see it?
No, I didn't.
It flew this morning, if you can see the video, it's, it's pretty cool.
Okay, I'll try and catch it on the reruns. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Diatley.
Um, just a couple of quick notes, uh, just that the speed sign is up and I wanna thank Mr. Kipinger for putting that up in public works and also thank chief for coordinating that with Officer Stegman to to kind of spearhead that up on the, on the sign. And just a special thanks to Mona Hour for donating the sign to the village, we appreciate it and we think it's gonna be a good addition, so thank you very much, and that's all for me.
Okay.
Only big one, kind of, I'd like to address it to the chief and to the police department, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Barely, speak up, Tom.
Kind of what?
Tom, the microphone's over here, you're looking at, just speak over this way.
Um, I I just wanted to thank the, it's kinda what Mr. Hendrickson alluded to, tough time to be a police officer. And um, I I hear a lot of people are fleeing from that, that job. Can't, you, you, the police can't catch a break, so I I just wanna thank the chief and and our department, Sue Wilson, who's been there so many years, and and the other young people that are coming on for having the courage to to just, to take that job and and to protect our village and and for all they do, I just um I I don't think they get, police don't ever get a pat on the back anymore, it's it's always a, a kick in the butt, so just wanted to express that.
Thank you very much.
And I don't want any tips, okay? Don't go fifty-two, it's gonna be all the road.
Or fifty-eight.
Keep it above sixty. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Diatley, uh, public buildings and environment? No report, thank you, sir. Uh, buildings and zoning enforcement, Mr. Perrano.
I just had, had a phone call last week from a resident who said that they were talking to some other residents regarding possibility of that four-letter word called sheds, I said to the resident, um, if if residents want to attend meetings, if residents want to pursue this topic on their own, they're certainly welcome to do that and they would approach the board accordingly. But I made it uh clear that uh, as long as I've been on the board, a lot of, you know, we we hear these things, but unfortunately, people do not attend the meetings. And I wanted to go on record by saying, uh, those who are watching on YouTube, I encourage you, when you have these ideas, to please reach out through public comments, reach out through videos, reach out through phone calls because uh, as a board, you know, our goal is uh to to listen to residents and if residents don't attend meetings, it's difficult for myself as a planning and zoning trustee to really do anything, so that's my, kinda my little statement on uh the uh, the state of uh planning and zoning, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anthony, uh, okay, uh, old business, fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. You have received, you've got three different versions in your package, you can choose either one of them. Uh, they're the same with just a couple of differences, one's the basic, one, one has a comparison of nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. And the other one has the detailed uh items under the major items. For example, on page one, uh, you, we've got the property taxes, the one detailed uh report will show you what we expect to collect from the county tax extension, what we expect to collect from the uh local state uh income tax, the license fees, et cetera, et cetera, down the line. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leahy supplies me with three, I should take a pick and choose one and just put one in there instead of us all having to find one that we're comfortable with. Each one has a little bit of different information in the way it's presented, but they all have the same numbers. So regardless of which one you look at, uh, you will be looking at the same numbers. Uh, my idea tonight is to go through the general fund and see if we can get through that. For the most part this evening, the capital improvement funds, the water and sewer funds, I think we can leave until the next meeting and pick those up. Uh, the state says we have to have this resolved by the end of the first quarter, which would be the end of July. I, my ideas or my hope is that we have this resolved the first part of May and not to put this on down any further, because once we get the budget done, we then we have to come back and reformulate the appropriations, which have to also be filed with the state. So, the appropriations will depend upon what we decide on the budget. So, starting on page one. Uh, we've got the beginning revenues. These figures are the ones that uh Brian and I have come up with, the majority of these come from the IML or from past history. The county tax extension, we know from past history what that's gonna be, the township assessor has already provided an idea as to what those extensions will be this coming year, we've incorporated those. Uh, the sales tax is of course an estimate, the sales tax NHMR is non-home rule, which we are and so that's an estimate of what we collect and on top of what the state collects. Uh, sales tax agreement with Elgin has expired, there will not be any money next year from Elgin. Sales tax developer rebates, we have not had a developer ask for a sales tax rebate. So there is no uh rebates that will be coming from that. Utility tax uh is provided to us from the taxes that are collected by the state. We have noticed that that has been decreasing the last few years, if you can, you'll notice that two thousand nineteen, we received a hundred and ninety-three thousand and two thousand twenty, we received a hundred and fifty-six thousand. We anticipate somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand at the end of this year, so we're anticipating uh a utility tax next year of a hundred and fifty thousand. The next line of the revenues, we look into intergovernmental re, revenues, these are being supplied by the IML, replacement tax. We anticipate about ninety-six hundred dollars from them, the state income tax, which is also sometimes referred to as the LGDF or the local government distributive funds. You'll notice in the notes, uh, if you're looking at that page, we've got two figures presented, we've got the LDGF at a hundred percent of what the IML is estimating and then we've got ninety percent of that figure. At a hundred percent, we're anticipating, or the IML is anticipating that the city or the village will receive a hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents per capita. We've got three thousand, three hundred and four people in the village. The LGF fund is one that has been under attack by, at the state level for as long as I can remember, it is considered low-hanging fruit. At one time, the LGDF was ten percent of all the state income tax collected by Illinois. They have since dropped that and we're down to around six percent now of the sales tax total collected. Of the hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents that the IML is anticipating, uh, I suggested to Brian that we drop that by ten percent with the attack in Springfield on the LGDF. And that is the uh, that'll be about thirty-six thousand, six hundred some odd dollar reduction from the forecast that the IML has. So instead of a hundred, or instead of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, uh, taking a ten percent reduction, we're looking at about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from there. Next, of course, is the cannabis, that we anticipate to go up, but we've not seen a lot of money from that. Uh, the local use tax is uh hopefully going to go up from a hundred and five this year to about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars next year.
Is the cannabis tax uh shared with all of us?
The cannabis tax has a per capita also, yes. The IML estimates that uh the village will receive about ninety-three cents per capita next year.
Thank you.
And on the local use tax, the IML uh estimates about forty-four dollars and fifty cents per capita. So, those are the intergovernmental uh revenues that we anticipate receiving. The next group is the license groups, this is vehicle permits, license permits, animal license, franchise fees and liquor license. Vehicle stickers, uh right now, of course, uh, we're estimating about, or we've got in actuality about thirty-one thousand dollars. We're anticipating about seventy-five thousand dollars. Last year, we only received seventy-two thousand dollars, the year before, we received ninety-one thousand dollars. Uh, of course, if you recall, fiscal year two thousand nine, or yeah, two thousand nineteen, we had the uh review of the license plates with the state uh database of all registered cars within the village of Sleepy Hollow. We bumped our revenues from about seventy thousand to ninety-one thousand. In the past couple of years, we've not done that scoff law review on the license plates uh versus the state, we've seen a little bit of a drop there. So, we're anticipating seventy-five thousand dollars again next year. Uh, animal tags, of course, follow the same line with the vehicle permits, when we express uh an interest in watching those, they go up, when we don't pay attention to them, they drop down. Franchise fees, these are fees we receive from the utility companies. Uh, the liquor license, at this point, when Brian identified this, we put in the whole forty-one hundred, uh, after the last meeting, the board suggested that we should take that back by fifty percent and extend our uh COVID relief funds, if you should, could call them that, to uh Elsie's and Salsa Street. So instead of forty-one hundred dollars, we'd be looking at about uh twenty-one hundred and twenty-one fifty again this year. So you can move that one down just a bit after last week's meeting, or the last meeting earlier. Uh, permits, building permits, we're anticipating about forty-five thousand. However, remember, this is a pass-through fee, whatever we collected the permits, we collect our ten dollars per hundred and the rest goes to ICCI. So, that's not all ours and, you know, we will have an expense against that. And that brings us to uh permits, fines or to fines and forfeitures after the permits. These, the chief and I have taken a look at, we were a little surprised, uh, we thought with the uh COVID pandemic this past year, we would see a a decrease in uh some of these, especially the court fees, uh, but surprisingly, they've come up. There may be uh some reason for this that we're not sure of, but we think it's the remote uh court process. It's easier to move through people with the uh remote version versus dealing with the masses in person. That allows them to move through this a little faster and get the funds uh collected and administered a little faster. Uh, court supervision, we don't anticipate too much increase of, uh, code enforcement fines, we never have been big on. Administrative ticket program, that uh has been picking up a little bit more than what we'd anticipated and now as the vaccinations get underway and things start opening up, we're gonna hope to see administrative ticket program uh increase. Well, is our impound uh program. So, fines and forfeitures, we hope. So, fines and forfeitures, we hope to see about ninety-six thousand dollars. That is still, uh, a decrease from two thousand nineteen. Uh, so, yeah, we saw a real drop real quick last spring, uh, when the COVID pandemic hit. So, two thousand twenty, we start, we lost some on that end from two thousand nineteen. We don't anticipate it all coming back next year either, so that's still down. Uh, interest income, uh, anybody's got a savings account, they know that's gone to zero. You can put it under your mattress and get more lint. Okay, alright. Uh, other revenues are just, uh, you have a little miscellaneous. Probably the biggest one of those would be our video gaming, uh, exercise in there. We're seeing about, uh, uh, twelve thousand dollars this year is what we're hoping, so we'll see that. And of course, the CARES Act relief funds is not, uh, active this year, so we won't see that. We may see the American Recovery Act funds, but those have not been, uh, decided upon yet, totally yet. I mean, they have anticipated that we will receive four hundred and seven, worth hundred thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. But that's a per capita amount based upon the, the way it was distributed with the, uh, CARES Act. And we're not quite sure this is going to come through with that, nor do we at this point know what restrictions we're going to have on the expenditure of those funds.
I, I, I think that's a key point because even though it, it sounds like a large number, as we saw last time, you know, we had certain restrictions on where that money could be spent. You know, it sounds, wow, that'd be awesome, but we don't know yet the parameters of what the restrictions may be. And, and if indeed that would be the total amount, uh, is there any idea of timing that we hear of that the state has said? Like say by, you know?
No, the only thing they have told us is that, uh, when we get it, we have to have it spent by December, I believe, two thousand twenty-four.
Two thousand twenty-four, right, okay, so they gave us, okay.
They gave us just a little over a year and a half or two to do it.
Okay.
Uh, the big item that we have seen though, that, uh, they did announce when it passed a couple of months ago, was that it would be allowed to be used for infrastructure.
Oh, okay.
And infrastructure would cover water lines and roads and culverts. So, there's a good possibility that we could use that four hundred some odd thousand in those areas. You know, we could definitely do it in roads and, and water mains. As you heard, Mr. Nemec, the last couple of months has been, you know, talking about the failure of our line and need to replace some of the older sections of town. Uh, that might be a very good source of it at that point. But, uh, otherwise, the budget does not reflect a dime of that. Only the money that we collected last year. And this past year's budget, which is the windfall to this year's budget. Uh, so that brings us through the revenues. We're anticipating one million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars in revenue this next year. It's about a nine percent increase over what we anticipate seeing this year. No, but it's still a decrease of about sixty thousand from what we received in two thousand nineteen. Any questions on the revenues? Anything you guys think we underestimated or overestimated?
No, I think we're right in there on most things.
Okay. Uh, salaries, I'm not going to go through tonight. Uh, those have all been based off of the union contract that we have, so, uh, we will leave those. I would like to take those up later, but we will do that under an executive session. Uh, okay, going into contractual, uh, services for, uh, the general, general administrative section. Uh, you can go down through this line by line. We've got, uh, two thousand dollars for the copy year maintenance for the year. We've got, uh, eleven, whoa, thirteen. We've got about, uh, thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars in computer maintenance service agreements and insurance. Street lighting. We've got, uh, five thousand, five hundred. Travel expenses, we've got five hundred. Auto allowance is seven hundred. Postage is a thousand. No, training is a thousand, postage is twenty-six hundred. Legal notices, eight hundred. Printing service, fifty-nine hundred. Uh, here's one now that's a lot different, if you notice, five hundred percent increase in payroll services. Payroll service we have been using, uh, will have a twenty-five hundred dollar a year fee. The difference on this from twenty-five hundred dollars to fourteen thousand is the eleven thousand, five hundred dollars that is penciled in for puzzle H R or puzzle, uh, human resources. This is a request from, uh, the administrative side of the village, i.e. Wendy at this point, uh, for eleven thousand, five hundred for human resource services. This was part of Ellen's and Henry's job as the finance director to handle human resources. This is, anytime anybody's hired, they've got to do all the paperwork, they've got to contact the insurance company, do all the insurance. Anybody's got a question about their insurance or their vacation or their pay, they've been taking it to Ellen or Henry. They've been taking it to Wendy now that Henry is out of the picture. And Wendy is not comfortable or a lot of times capable of answering a lot of these questions. And it's been frustrating for not only Wendy, but for the rest of the village staff that has to, you know, give answers to these various questions. So, Wendy has asked that we consider hiring a human resource firm to take these issues off of their plate. That's eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, okay? That's in there. Engineering services is in there, fifteen thousand. Legal services is in at twenty-eight thousand. Uh, and that is up, if you look at seventeen or, uh, two thousand nineteen, we were only about seventeen and a half thousand dollars for legal services. But with the departure of, uh, Henry and, uh, no finance director on staff, I've had to re, utilize Mr. Schuster's services for some of these human resource issues, a lot more than I've had in the past. So, I bumped those up. As you can see, I've brought it up this year to twenty-eight, we're right now at twenty-six, six. Uh, the other professional services is the, uh, I C C I. That, as I told you, remember in the revenues, we had forty-five thousand. Now, expenses, we got forty-five thousand, which zeros that out for us. Uh, other, okay, codifications, we've got five thousand dollars. Uh, license permits and fees, twenty-one hundred. Dues and membership, thirty-five hundred. The audit with the new auditor is eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Is, this is a quick question on the codification.
Codification?
Is the five, what's the definition of that? What's the five thousand there for?
Codification.
What is codification?
Codification is codifying on code book.
Right.
Whenever we do an ordinance, it has to be codified into the code book.
Right, so the five thousand is what we have in the budget for next year to use towards
Codifying.
Doing that
Right.
Service network. Thank you.
Uh, okay, other contractual services. The, the big one in there, of course, the, uh, contracted accounting services. That is, uh, our finance guy from, uh, Water and, uh, Ox, Water, Bach and Almond. Uh, we're looking at about seventy-two thousand dollars for that service. Okay, commodities, office supplies, operating and maintenance supplies.
I see, I, I, mark you one second.
Sure.
Just to ask you a question, um, with, uh, the accounting services and the, the work, if we're going to be paying that, uh, for human services, is, is it still beneficial to have?
Does it not have a, uh, um?
An office employee handling? It's getting close. We had about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the finance director's position. That was salary and benefits. And with, uh, seventy-two thousand going to L and A for that service and eleven thousand going to H and R, we are at about eighty-three thousand dollars. We've got about seventeen thousand left.
So, one, Mr. Schuster too.
And then extras going to Mr. Schuster.
So, we're getting pretty close.
Yeah, so we're pretty close to utilizing that hundred thousand elsewhere, so.
So, is it, is it, are you trying to look for some?
Uh, well, personally, I think it's time to look for a full-time, uh, office manager. Uh, it just, you know, that's my thought. Uh, it's difficult to operate with a part-time, uh, accounting. They're only in a couple of days a week. There is no management of the rest of the staff or the office from that service. So, it causes, or requires more of my time and attention than, you know?
Somebody here taking care of whatever you
Right.
Well.
Some of my family members like to see me, you know?
Well.
Hold the shop, you retired, we thought we'd see more of you. Uh, so that's something, you know, I, we need, the, the board needs to think about and consider. Uh, do we continue with this seventy-two thousand for accounting service? Plus eleven thousand for an H and R? Or do we take this money and start looking for a full-time management employee within the village to, to handle this day-to-day stuff?
Well, and Tom, thank you for asking that question, I agree. And Steve, the other savings are not put in there, is there some other savings that have just skipped through the cracks because there isn't there somebody full-time? And I think, you know, we could find some more money that way too, so I, I, I agree with you. I think it's time to put some serious consideration into having somebody sitting here full-time. I shouldn't say running things, but.
Managing things.
That, that's, yes, yes, good, good wording, yes, I agree.
Okay, any other questions on, uh, the commodities?
Steve, just for clarification then, as far as, I know we're not going to pass the budget tonight, but how are that, if we're going to consider doing that and do it in the near term, how would we budget for that? When do we have to make these decisions?
Well, your budget for that's going to be pretty much right here in the, the budget as it is. The salary form is going to be what we're paying L and A right now. Okay, that's going to be our budget. We've got seventy-two thousand earmarked for L and A. That's our starting point for, you know, a finance director. Is, you know, we've got seventy-two plus, as I said, we've got seventeen thousand else, uh, seventeen thousand dollars, uh, left from, uh, when Henry left us. Uh, that would bring us to seventeen and seventy-two is eighty-nine, or ninety-nine, eighty-nine.
And then I assume that.
So, we're running about ninety thousand. Uh, as I said, the, the H and R, the H R issued eleven-five i- is the balance. So, yeah, and if we hire a, a manager, we don't want that H R. So, we're back to our hundred thousand in our budget, Joe.
That's, I mean, so, so how would we, so we should wait till we pull the trigger on the H R person until we make a decision on this and put some real thought into it? I guess what I'm saying.
The dollars are there, just a matter of then allocating it with it.
Yeah.
Right. I, what Joe's saying is, do we go with, uh, the puzzle H R or do we start looking for an employee? I'd like to start looking.
I think we should start looking.
I think we should start looking.
Okay. All right. Uh, so, okay, let me back up. Do you want to scratch that eleven-five from H R then?
Yes.
Okay.
But do we need to add more than two?
Well, that'll give you a surplus.
Right.
Right.
We have to remember that we've got seventy-two and eleven, so we've got eighty-three right there, plus the seventeen. There, we've got close to our hundred thousand that we were spending for Henry and, uh, Ellen to contend with. So, okay, any other questions on administrative? Okay, after on administrative, uh, police protection. Once again, salaries are off of the contract, we'll leave those as, uh, contractual services.
I just had a quick question on the, uh, not expenses, but just from a clarification point. The health, life and, and, uh, the insurance number, the hundred and fifteen thousand, eight oh one. I- is, is that, uh, is the insurance, uh, part of the contract or is it, uh, yearly? That's, that's the, the health insurance, the other insurances? So, can, can it, doesn't that whole insurance program be looked at each year for a change in the beginning of the calendar year?
That insurance is reviewed annually. We did that last fall.
Except on a contract.
Right.
Okay, so the next opportunity for us to look at that particular expense would be
December first.
Later this year.
December first.
For, uh,
For
Change for twenty-twenty-two.
Right. Now, our, our insurance does not run on our fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay, it runs January first, December thirty.
Calendar year, okay.
It's on a calendar year. We will get those quotes sometime. This is one of those
Yeah.
Areas that you, you, you really wish you'd have a little bit more time, but it seems like we get the quotes on November fifteenth and we have to have the decision on December first. And we never have a, this meeting on December first, so we end up having to make it on November seven, twenty-first or twenty-second, uh, to, to get into this thing. But yeah, that's, that is redone totally separate of the union contract. It's a standalone.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Maintenance vehicles, uh, maintenance equipment, computer maintenance, animal control. There's not any really big changes in this?
Oh, the printing service, oh, that's, well, cause we, didn't we, uh, reduce some expenses since we went to the electronic newsletter? Does that, would that have been in that one?
The printing services. This is printing services for the police department.
Oh, sorry.
This would be printing our citations, the various, like, four different types of citations, um, the crime prevention notices and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay.
What is that? You're trigger government.
Services, Quadcom, nine-one-one. Uh, and you'll notice that, uh, that figure has actually decreased a little bit. We were paying as much as ninety-five thousand, uh, in, or ninety-seven thousand in two thousand twenty. Uh, we anticipated to be ninety-seven thousand, about three hundred dollars less than last year. We actually thought we were going to be about, uh, six thousand dollars less. We thought it was going to be, it's about, the Quadcom bill will be ninety-one thousand dollars, uh, this year. The kicker came in on the Starcom radio, which we have to go with, and we will be making a payment of six thousand dollars a year on that.
Right.
Oh, then we're back up to ninety-seven thousand again. Yeah, we cut it down and it got built back up, so.
Yeah. And one thing to keep
And one thing to keep in mind as we go down the road, it hasn't kicked in yet, but will be the body cam expense and the storage of all that video. That is going to be quite costly on things I have read so far. Chief, you can probably speak better to that, but that kicks in in twenty twenty five. Is that correct?
Yes, January first, twenty twenty five, we will have to have body cameras and have everything in place. So talk to the mayor and Brian. Now that we kind of know where it's coming in the timeline, maybe kind of make a little savings account and start putting money toward that. And maybe about six months out in twenty twenty four, make the purchase and all the training is done, kind of like we're doing now via Zoom. They'll show you how to record and do operate all the body cameras plus how to get all the videos and how to submit it to the state's attorneys and any other type of media, whether it be a DVD or whatever. I know DVDs are going out of style now, but I descend it chronically. And the state's attorney for Kane County and all the counties in Illinois already have the software to get it. Taser Exxon gave it to them, so they'll be able to receive anything we get. It's just kind of getting the program in place and getting the money saved up to. And Exxon's been great with working with us instead of putting, usually they put it all toward the front. And then the payments decrease. They've kind of spaced it out to make it nice and even for us, to work with us to purchase these body cameras in the storage.
Yeah, so yeah, just something to keep in mind as we go forward with that. Thank you.
Cap issue that we'll work with the next session. Okay. Let's see, commodities with the police department. We're looking the same, gas and oil. Nothing really outstanding. You know, we kept, well, say, the staff is keeping the cost down. COVID pandemic really put us in a bind and I must say they stepped up and they've been watching those nickels and dimes like hawks. Any other questions on the police? Unless we've got a total projection for the police, the increase of only three percent. Pretty good. That's basically cost of living and the contract. Parks and recreation. Passing through the salaries once again. Contractual services, vehicle maintenance, we're hoping to say the same. Our equipment may open to say the same. General insurance, we hope to stay the same. Gas and oil operating expenses. Any questions on any of those line items? Once again, we're about three percent increase. Village property. We've got nine thousand for village maintenance or for building maintenance, equipment maintenance. We've got twenty five hundred. Maintenance other seven thousand. Village property. Doesn't look like we're going to have much of an increase on that at all. Any questions on village property? Okay, streets and highways. Moving to the contractual services. Vehicle maintenance. Hope to stay the same. Maintenance equipment, the same. Maintenance streets, we had twenty five thousand. We're hoping to hold twenty five thousand next year. Insurance, communications, engineering for road projects. Any questions on streets and highways? Okay. The next item is transfer of funds. And that one, we're going to have to do some work on. We ran into a question the other day with Brian as to why the transfers for funds and the five year cap wasn't looking right. We've got a problem with the hardware or the software that we use, M S I. And he's going to call them tomorrow and see if he can find out why some of our balances and transfers haven't shown in the five year cap and the transfer issue here. What we're rejecting is a transfer of about two hundred and seventy one thousand dollars this year into the five year cap. And then next year, we hope to have a hundred and seventy five thousand to transfer out. Which would, then, if you look at your very bottom line, we've got total revenues of one million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And we've got expenses of one million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, left us a surplus of a hundred and seventy six thousand. I've asked Brian to revise that going forward to show a hundred and seventy five thousand transferred into our five year capital fund. Which would then bring us down to a deficit of about seven hundred dollars because we caught our liquor license by half. However, we've also this evening decided not to explore the H and R issue of eleven thousand, five hundred. That'll bring us back to about an eleven thousand dollar surplus for next year. That takes us into the five year cap. Any questions on the general fund?
The only question I have, Steve, is you mentioned copier. I just brought up questions. Mike Sparrow had commented that there were some significant savings when the current lease was up on the current system we have. Do we know when the lease is up on that or current copier, printer, scanner?
I'd have to have them pull that contract. I'm wanting to say that was an eight or ten year agreement.
I don't know. I know it's a long answer. It's just something worthwhile to keep that in back of your mind and see when we can get out of that and talk to Mr. Sparrow to see where the, what he had in mind for savings.
Okay.
So.
Make a note on that one.
That was a.
Any other items we want to question?
No.
No.
Looks good. Steve, I know with the pandemic and Brian and you taking over. I just want to say thank you so much for putting the effort and the work into this and making it so clear and keeping us within our budget, so. And explaining it to us. So thank you for your time and effort and the same to Brian because I do know that there was times where we sit in a board meeting and literally go through each item for several hours a night for weeks on end. So this has been a much less painless process and I think we get a really good budget out of it. So thank you. Nah, thank you.
Okay. All right, next time we will pick up with the five year cap and then we will do sewer and water awesome.
Can I make a comment on the?
Yes.
I also thank you for all the work you put into this, okay?
Thank you.
You put a lot of time into it. I received, I was at the last meeting, but I got a copy of this white tennis sweater, you know. And it might give some ideas that I never heard of, you know, I mean, like with the, with the culverts, possibly the people that are benefiting it participating in the expense on it. And I'm hoping there's one trustee that hasn't been appointed, that you can find somebody. We've had the same people in the finance as a trustee and I'm not putting anybody down. And Mike on the finance committee for so many years. Maybe you could find somebody who's got a fresh approach to things that, that none of us are seeing, okay? Like, like with, you know, what Mike mentions here, I don't know if Mike ever come to the meeting and saying, hey, guys, maybe, maybe you could do this this way and give them some guidance, give the board some guidance. I hope you could find somebody who could really, you know, maybe there's.
Think outside the box?
Yeah, maybe there's, there's nothing to think about.
Well, we are limited.
I hope you could really find a finance guy that could maybe help us. I'm not saying these guys didn't help us, but maybe we've had this thing, people doing everything for so many years that it just becomes routine and we don't think outside the box.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. Then the next item is new business. First item under new business is a waiver of late fees for Spring Hill Apartments. Joe, we've got a copy of an envelope, but we did not get an amount.
We did not. Actually, I said it, it got lost in the ether someplace. So I would like to move that we waived the late fees for Spring Hill Apartments, the amount of four hundred, forty eight dollars and sixteen cents due to delayed mail.
What was that? What was the amount of that? Four hundred, forty eight dollars and sixteen cents?
That's correct.
Did you get it?
Yeah. I'd second that, Deatley.
Moved by Nimitz, seconded by Deatley to waive the late fees to Spring Hill Apartments in the amount of four hundred, forty eight dollars and sixteen cents due to a delay in the mail, as testified in the packet with the envelope. Postage dated February twenty third, we received in, no, February twenty second. It was received in the village March twenty third. And I must say, those people were calling almost daily to see if we'd gotten that check. We called and said, yeah, we're missing your payment. And they all know, we sent it. All right, no further comments, questions or discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
The Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Merkel.
Hi.
Mr. Deatley.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. Motion, so passes. Any other new business to come before the board?
I just have one little quick thing. I heard Tom say that he only has ten days left, so on the board. Is that correct, Tom?
I have a long day's foot.
You come to the next meeting, Tom, we can say goodbye soon.
I would just like to, I would just like to thank you, Tom, for your service to the village. I really appreciate you on the board and everything you've done for the village. So just thank you very much.
I just had a question for the chief. I know a few weeks ago, there were some reports of potential nighttime visitors in the village running around. Any update on any other sinister activity that may have been happening?
All quiet on the western front, no. And any of the other villages, surrounding villages too, kind of just went away, I think. A lot of the saturation patrols and I know Wes Dundee, we kind of shared that area with them that they were getting hit quite a bit. They had some overtime patrols in there and we were spending a lot of time in that area. And all of a sudden, as fast as it came, it went away. Kind of how it did a year before when all of a sudden we had a bunch of eggings in a couple of days and then poof, they went away.
I thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other new business? Joe, are you going to get a burka lounge or next week?
I know.
I should turn off my virtual background. Steve, I'm already there.
Oh, you're in the burka lounge.
I am in the, actually not the name drop. I am in the lazy boy right now. My feet recline, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I had to give up the computer tonight to my wife because she had a meeting too, so I.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Merkel to adjourn. All, no, roll call. Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Merkel.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Deatley.
Hi.
We ran the table. Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are adjourned. The next meeting is May third.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
All right.
Aren't you going to come and get it personally next week or next meeting?